Two, two. We have a little bit of.
Yep, it's working. We have sound.
We have sound. Do I have a little bit of feedback? Are we okay there? All right, I'll go ahead and gavel us in. It is the January 8th, 2024, City Council Meeting 6:06. Quick reminder to go ahead and silence your cell phones if you haven't already. And welcoming folks to our first City Council Meeting of 2024. That sounds pretty wild to say 2024. I would like to welcome two new council, uh, two new councilors to City Council here. In Ward 1, we have Eric Melson. And then in Ward 5, we have Bob Campbell. So welcome and nice to have you here. Thank you. Okay, folks are in slightly different order in case you come to council and wonder, wow, they're in different seats. We are in a different order tonight just to help with my presiding over the meeting, no doubt, and, uh, and just to help with the order. So we'll go ahead and start with, um, a roll call. Ms. Trimble, we have Stacy Anderson online. And other than that, oh, and Mike Nugent is on his way. He is just gonna be a few minutes late due to airline traffic.
Okay, I will mark him when he gets here.
Great, thank you. And I'll go ahead and try to make note of that as well. All right. Wonderful. We'll move on to item number two, which is approval of the minutes. And you see here, there are four sets of minutes from November 6th, the 27th, December 11th, and December 18th. Are there any changes to any of the minutes? You're not seeing any from Stacy? Okay, great. Well, then, seeing none, those minutes will go ahead and be approved as submitted. Thank you. All right, great. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. And I'll just go ahead and remind the public that this is an opportunity to give public comment on non-agenda items. We ask that you keep it to three minutes or under, and that we ask your comments to be respectful and civil. Thank you. So come on up. All right. Oh, great, thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Trimble, we have somebody online?
Yes, there is one hand raised.
Right. N. Stevens. Go right ahead. Looks like you're unmuted there. Give you a second.
We cannot hear you.
I think you.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, you, oh, you can hear me now.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Thank you for, um, for your time. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I have, uh, helping with my kids with homework this evening, but I wanted to, um, give some public comment this evening. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. Good evening, esteemed members of the City Council. Uh, my name is Nathan Stevens. My last name is spelled S.T.E.P.H.E.N.S. And I am on resident Ward 5 in Missoula. And I'm joining you virtually to share not just a personal experience, but, uh, I believe a crucial perspective on our community's safety. Um, I'd like to bring to your attention an incident that occurred in my neighborhood on December 29th of 2023. An incident that has prompted me to address you tonight. On that day, eh, excuse me, on that day, my wife and I witnessed an act of potential vandalism involving a neighbor's vehicle and approximately two dozen severed chicken feet. In response, we dialed 911 seeking assistance and justice. However, what unfolded exposed a disheartening truth. Our current reporting system is ill-equipped to address incidents outside our immediate property boundaries. Subsequent discussions today with Donna Townsley, Assistant Manager of Missoula County 911, revealed the challenges associated with reporting incidents not directly tied to our property. The dispatcher's explanation that a formal report couldn't be filled due to the location that the incident was deeply troubling. The incident is particularly poignant in light of the encouragement we often receive from law enforcement to report anything suspicious that we see. It highlights a significant contradiction. While we are encouraged to be vigilant and report, the existing system makes it practically impossible to do so effectively. Members of the City Council, this incident underscores the urgent need for a more comprehensive reporting system that considers incidents occurring beyond individual property lines. Limitations we face today jeopardize our community's safety. I urge the City Council to take proactive steps towards implementing a recording system that truly serves and protects every member of our community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Stevens. Is there anybody else online that would like to give public comment this evening? Okay, not seeing in, any. And then last call for anybody in the room tonight to give, uh, public comment?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Come on up. Make sure you say and spell your name, please.
Big K Montana Spitzmacher. It's been 15 months that I've been here in Missoula. As I approached the Pavarello 15 months ago, I was doing a survey on the advocacy program. While I can tell you the advocacy program has changed at Missoula considerably, thanks to, instead of we getting the staff involved in regards to problems, just dial 911. There are real problems, and there's a specific individual that almost prompted me last night to dial 911 while he was under the influence of substance. So he reined himself in really quick and others to get him out of my, get him out of his, I should say, get him out of my regarding so forth, which is not positive. And it'd be a year in January, which would be Katrina that created the problem. When you questioned her, it was considered argumentative. And that's been published on Facebook on the circumstances of the deceit of that facility back then. I emphasize deceit, no different than in Washington on January 6th and what I seen on Frontline, January 6th of this year, that they put out a real substantial presentation. Frontline, substantial. So anyways, the second one was, I was being threatened by three individuals of the river friendship that moved into the Pavarello. Who gets persecuted? The one that's being threatened. The persecuted got acknowledged. And that comes from the individuals that worked with Jill Bonney, which her name would be Ms. Christie. So I had problems with Ms. Christie in regards to how well I'm physically able to do real good riding on my bicycle, the Harbor Freight, to get a dolly for my acquired amenities that I enjoy at the Johnson Center. She had to ask me, where did I get it? First of all, like I acquired it from somewhere else. And it was tattooed from my bicycle wheel as I brought it to the Johnson Center. Then when I showed her my expression, how I appreciate my family heritage, it offended her heritage, which is just the opposite. Why shouldn't of my character, of my physical physique, be ashamed of my heritage of my grandmother's and my mother that I don't regard at all? So anyways, the individuals at the Johnson Center, that I had to take issue. And I am grateful that I've got the amenities of my status to do as I done. And it was used with my credit card that I had to do and vacate within 15 minutes when I was explaining it to another staff member in regards to how I regard my physical physique with positivity. You know, I see a lot of these physical physique individuals running around Montana.
Mr. Spitzmacher, you're at three minutes.
Okay, but things have improved greatly at the Pavarello substantially. But there are some gray areas that are a little bit too black that need to be improved. But on the fact of the matter, let's continue to have the directive. And what are we gonna be aware of, of the weather coming in this weekend and next week? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any other public comments this evening? Hello? Come on up.
Hey, everyone. My name is Silas Teasdale. I don't have solutions. But I just wanted to talk about the ordinance on sleeping in cars, sleeping in tents, sleeping in public spaces. I know it's not an easy issue. But I grew up in Missoula without a lot of means, not a lot of ways to help those people beyond a granola bar or maybe a coffee when I have a chance. And when you don't have money ways to help people who are struggling, you help them with little things and with community building. And it, it, it really, it hurt to leave town for a bit and come back and see memorials for houseless people I know on the sidewalks, knowing I wouldn't be able to talk to them again. And that if we had been able to do better things as a city to help those people survive winters like this, I might have been able to tell them about the travels that I had brainstormed with them before I left, about their lives before they were houseless, because they had visited those places too. So when you're considering your votes in this next month, if you pass these ordinances, you're taking away one of the few ways that people like me, who don't have a lot of money, actually have a way to try to support those people, because we don't get to share those community spaces. If you pass these ordinances, you're pushing these people out of the community. And so regular folks don't have a way to even try to connect with them and pull them back into the fold. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, any others this evening?
Ooh, my name's Clayton Shea. S.H.A.Y.A. On the comments of the first caller, I just wanted to reflect back on a bit of my years with the Johnson last year when, uh, I called 911 because someone was bashing out five of my windows on the street right after assaulting me inside during lunch. So there's the assault. I walk away kindly. What do I get for it? But this person follows me to the street, starts bashing out the windows there. 911 calls. Come. And they refuse to chase the fellow because the car is not legally in my name. Now, it's the same car that they ticketed me for public nuisance for when it was on Johnson Street two weeks earlier. They didn't have any problem ticketing me or refusing to help me move it or anything until this year. I mean, this year, Officer Jay and Garrett went over the top, offering to help me get my car up and running, which never really panned out. But all they did was refuse to pursue these people over breaking my car windows. And when I asked about the assault, they ignored me as well. And that's when I really saw Seattle just flashing at me and that big city mentality that I had just left because I wanted to come back and get away from it, somewhere that maybe hadn't really, like, taken on that idea yet, that some people just don't matter. It really gave me pause to hear it coming from the other side of the fence as well. So it's not just us making the complaint. You know, I go to court tomorrow over nine city ordinances that we didn't have the rules to really clarify, that I've been taking time out of my summer, all summer, my spring, my now winter, and showing up in court and doing my due diligence and going to court only to be postponed and postponed because this is still postponed. There's no decision. There's nothing to base on. All because we drug our feet. When Boise stresses, if you look back at Boise, it stresses that you cannot sidestep calling homelessness illegal by charging for every other thing in the book, like public nuisance, public nuisance, disorderly, public nuisance, trespass, public nuisance. Call it whatever you want. When you have two officers come and offer to pay you out of town and you get three tickets the next week at places you're not even at, and nobody wants to take the time to look at it and see that I'm fighting a case that's totally harassment in your town. And on that note, I'd like to know what happened to the promises that Mr. Hess made us about additional amenities for larger camps. I mean, these were promises that happened in closed meetings, not with just council people, but with me as well, where he promised us things. And I don't see them happening yet, really planned for at all. And I'm starting to wonder about all the promises that we heard through this election. It's breaking my heart.
Mr. Shea, you're after three minutes.
I've been reflecting on a couple of things this week. And one of them is all the role models that we had growing up in life, like Tom Sawyer and Huck Finn, Lady and the Tramp, Kung Fu, Kerouac, all these travelers, nomadic, houseless people.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shea. Mr. Moore, come on up.
My name's Bob Moore. M.O.O.R.E. Got a few points I'd like to make. There's gonna be a major, major wreck at the intersections of England and Flynn. People are coming parking there, taking up half the lane to get into the mailbox. For many years, I tried to get Mayor Engen to fix the intersection and make signs where people could see what they were doing and so forth. At Flynn and Broadway, he never did it. Just handed me a lot of junk like I was an incompetent fool. Many, many wrecks occurred at that intersection. And then a couple of years ago, I don't know the exact date, one person was killed at that intersection. The same thing's gonna happen at the other intersection. I guarantee you, somebody will die trying to get their mail out of the, uh, out of the mailbox. Another question I'd like to know. I talked to the mayor many times about Sleepy Inn. Y'all probably know about Sleepy Inn. City overpaid for their property about double based on listings in the real estate pages. I forgot the exact numbers now, but it was about double what the city paid for that property. And now, in a recent conversation, I questioned the, what they were using it for and so forth. Oh, I'm assured we're going to double, this was the last mayor. I'm sure we're going to double our profits on the Sleepy Inn. I guess all of y'all know the Sleepy Inn's been for sale for, I don't know exactly how long, for months, several months. You should hire people who know what they're doing and y'all get out of the way or make a fair price. Fair to the stockholders. I mean, the stockholders. I have some stock. Another point. The legal fees were supposed to be $400,000 on the water.
Mr. Moore, you're at three minutes.
Okay. Ended up being 14 million. How can you do such a statement like that? I hope you'll make wiser decisions this year. Another hope I have is I hope you get rid of the MRA. It's one of the main reasons taxpayers.
Mr. Moore, wrap it up, please. Thank you.
My name's Jeffrey Oswald. I live over on Mount Avenue. I'm getting up this time. I, I wasn't gonna talk today, but we've got new councilors and I might as well introduce myself. I'm sort of, uh, in life, I always try to help people out. I recently returned to work, um, taking care of developmentally disabled adults. I did it for 20 years, and then I took a break for a while and walked around the streets of Missoula and saw that there was a community of people, many of which were vulnerable in the same ways that developmentally disabled adults are. In fact, some of them might be that, exactly that, as well as a lot of mental illnesses that are prominent in, um, the type of behaviors that make people unpopular with people who are doing a lot better than they are. And, um, I walk around out there and talk to people about the gospel of Jesus Christ because I believe that in treating people the way you would like to be treated, then we could have an egalitarian society where people are taken care of instead of cast away, instead of treated as human refuse. They're treated as neighbors that can be developed through kindness and opportunity into people who feel good about themselves and do good things. And, um, I would hope that the city would foster that sort of orientation towards people within its perimeters as opposed to looking at people, treating them as, and, and then prosecuting them as some kind of criminal because they don't have the advantages in life that others have. And it's a complicated issue because there's a lot of different people out there, and they're out there for different reasons. And I'd be lying if I said they were all good people. But I would be much further than from the truth if I was said that there weren't a lot of good people out there on the street, suffering day to day, doing their best not to be a pain in the ass to people, but just to avoid the big stick that chases them around town, wherever they decide to, is a safe place to lie down. And like, that's part of the story. And there is not sufficient, um, shelter state space in this city. And to tell the truth, having seen the inside of the Johnson Center, it's a place that is much likely to sow discontent in people's hearts and make them more aberrant in their behavior than to comfort them and move them towards functionality, if that's what people really want. And I hear a lot of people talking about it. But giving somebody a hand up means you have to give them your attention and your heart for some period of time that'll actually allow them to feel some relief from the stresses of life. Because if they're stuck in a survival mode day to day, they're never going to be able to aspire to high levels. And there's no reason anyone should expect them to be able to rise up higher when they got a boot on their neck. And that's what it's like for people living on the ground in this town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Oswald. Anybody else for public comment this evening? Okay. Not seeing any, then we'll move on from that agenda item. And we'll move on to number four, which is the announcement of city, uh, excuse me, committee meetings, committee membership appointments, and changes to committee agendas. Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead and read the committee's schedule, please?
I will. On Wednesday, January 10th, we are starting committee meetings at 10:00 a.m. with Committee of the Hall, where the councilors will appoint, uh, the council members to their various committee chairs. And we will also make appointments to the boards and commissions that they will serve as liaison. At 10:55, Climate, Conservation, and Parks Committee will meet. They have three items on the agenda. One is the West End Farms. One is Dean's, uh, Mountain Dean Stone Forestry Professional Services Agreement with the Montana Forest Consultants. And one is a referral regarding the Clarkport River Access and Restoration CIP Project. Be an hour break for lunch. Then at 1:00 p.m., the Land Use and Planning Committee will meet, discussing 1200 Shakespeare Street, a tavern conditionally used request, and a referral and staff report regarding Orchard Grove Annexation and Major 24 Lot Subdivision. At 2:25, Public Safety, Health, and Operations Committee will meet, discussing the adoption of the City Council Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan for 2023. There will be two collective bargaining agreements presented by HR. One is the Operating Engineers WW Collective Bargaining Agreement and the MFPE Engineering Employees Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. And finally, rounding out the day, at 3:15, Public Works Mobility will meet, and they have quite a few agenda items. One is a street maintenance agreement between the City of Missoula and the Montana Department of Transportation fiscal year 2024, 2025. Also, a track out-of-service agreement with Montana Rail Link for the City of Missoula to remove existing railroad grade crossings. A bid award to Three Rivers Land Works LLC for the East Equith Water Main Replacement Project. A presentation to approve the City of Missoula and MUTD's memorandum of agreement. An interlocal agreement regarding the approval of a joint RACE grant application. A bid award to Prospect Construction for the Momont and Harlequin Water Main Project. West End Second Amendment to the Right-of-Way Agreement. And finally, an amendment number one to the South Fourth Street Water Main Replacement Project.
All right. Sounds like a big committee day on Wednesday. All right, thank you, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in City Council committees to be placed on the consent agendas to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. So Ms. Trimble, if you're ready to go ahead and read these?
I am. It's a very light consent agenda. We only have three items, and they are all related to accounts payable. We're asking the council to ratify accounts payable claims for checks dated December 26th, 2023 in the amount of $2,050,835.22. We're also asking for the ratification of accounts payable for claims for checks dated January 2nd, 2024 in the amount of $374,370.61. And finally, to approve the accounts payable claims for checks dated January 9th, 2024 in the amount of $743,715.23.
Great. Thank you very much, thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. So we'll go ahead and take public comment on these items on the consent agenda before the council takes a vote. Any public comment? Okay, not seeing any in the room. And doesn't look like we have any online either. All right. Then we are ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, would you like to go ahead and do that?
Before I begin, has Mr. Nugent arrived?
No, he has not, not quite yet. Thank you for asking.
No worries. Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Azika?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
That passes unanimously with 11 votes.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. Great, all right. So that moves us on then to agenda item number six, which our. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing and then votes the following week unless there is a requirement for final action on the night of the public hearing. So the first one is item 9.1, and that is titled the Keep Missoula Weird Ordinance, an ordinance to amend MMC 9.32 entitled Sound Devices. In this case, we have a recommended motion. This is the second and final reading. And we'll go ahead and ask that Councilwoman Becerra, go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you, yes.
And I just wanted to let you guys know that I wasn't completely sure what the motion was. I believe that the last round of amendments occurred on 12-4, but if that's not correct, please let me know before we make the motion.
Does that look okay there?
It looks okay to me based on our last committee meeting where we discussed this. So I will go ahead and make that recommended motion. I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code, Chapter 9.32, entitled Sound Devices, to as found in attached document entitled 12-4 Sound Devices, Keep Missoula Weird.
Okay. Thank you. A motion is on the floor. That will open it up then to public comment on the motion. Is there any public comment this evening on item 9.1? Okay. Not seeing any in the room? Any online?
There are no hands raised to present.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. All right. Then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote of item 9.1, please.
All right. Beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Azika?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Anderson. Is that a yes from Anderson? Sorry, yes, I had the team timed me out. Yes. That's 11 in favor and none opposed.
Great. All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Congrats. All right. Item 9.2. Then we'll go ahead and move on to the next public hearing. This is a, um, a public, we're holding a public forum on an application from Missoula County Public Schools to vary from Title 20 zoning code requirements for dynamic display signs and wall signs at Russell Elementary School and Lewis and Clark Elementary School. Under state and local law, the council's role is to conduct this public forum and take public comment, but city council has no decision-making role. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment, again, on a dynamic display signs at Russell and Lewis and Clark Elementary Schools. Any public comment this evening?
Hi. My name's Jeffrey Oswald, O-S-W-A-L-D. I'm guessing by dynamic means something that flashes. Is it, I don't know the particulars about it, but I've worked with a lot of people with seizure disorders, and there are flashing lights that actually can cause seizures in people. Or in some people, flashing lights can cause seizures. So if it was in a place that was really publicly oriented, that might not be a good idea for that reason. For some reason, I felt like I needed to say that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any others in the room? Okay. Great. All right. How about online? I think I see somebody with their hand raised.
Oh, yeah. This is Cassie Trippard, planning supervisor. I just wanted to note that there is a presentation for this item with more information. Thanks.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Cassie, did you just say that there's a presentation for this item this evening?
Correct.
Okay. My apologies on that. Let's go ahead and hear from Claire Lovelace. Thank you for making sure I saw that. And for the record, Councilor Nugent has arrived. Welcome.
Okay. Can everyone see my, can everyone see my slides?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Claire Lovelace, an assistant planner in the Community Planning, Development, and Innovation Division. CPDI has received notice from Missoula County Public Schools of their intent to place dynamic reader board signs at Russell Elementary School located at 3216 Russell Street and Lewis and Clark Elementary School located at 2901 Park Street. The proposed project includes the installation of dynamic reader board signs that will be approximately 25 square feet in area and 15 feet off the ground. Missoula County Public Schools is a government agency and city council is authorized to hold a public hearing when an agency proposes to develop or use public land contrary to Title 20 zoning regulations. In this case, MCPS is proposing signs that do not meet the sign chapter of zoning. The public hearing is known as a public forum. Per state law, council does not have a decision-making role and will not vote on the item. The purpose of the public forum is for MCPS to take public comment on their proposal. MCPS is authorized by state law to move forward with the proposal as is following the public hearing. Russell Elementary is located at 3216 Russell Street, near the YMCA and Playfair Park. The sign will be placed on the west side of Russell Elementary, facing Russell Street. Lewis and Clark Elementary School is located at 2901 Park Street, about a quarter mile southeast of Sentinel High School. The sign will be on the west side of Lewis and Clark Elementary, facing the school field and the residential lots on Queen Street. The maroon stars mark the location of these proposed signs. Russell Elementary is zoned OP3, public lands and institutional. Parcels located to the north and east of the subject property are also zoned OP3. Parcels located to the west and south are zoned RM135 residential. Lewis and Clark Elementary is zoned R5.4 residential. All parcels surrounding the school are also zoned R5.4 residential. Schools are permitted use in both the OP3 and R5.4 zoning districts. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 R-Missoula City Growth Policy. Per the growth policy, Russell Elementary School's land use designation is public and quasi-public. This designation is for land with structures or uses such as schools, airports, community buildings, cemeteries, and utility facilities. Land currently owned by public agencies are held in reserve for future development, or public facilities also receive this designation. Surrounding land use designations include public and quasi-public, community mixed use, residential high, and neighborhood mixed use. There is a concentration of office and multi-dwelling residential uses surrounding Russell Elementary. Lewis and Clark Elementary School's land use designation is residential medium. This designation is for residential building types ranging in density from three dwelling units per acre to 11 dwelling units per acre. It is intended to fit with many already established residential neighborhoods and acknowledge the single dwelling residential building type as the primary use with the potential for accessory dwellings as well. Surrounding land use designations include public and quasi-public and residential medium. There is a concentration of residential uses surrounding Lewis and Clark Elementary School. The surrounding uses of both schools are compatible with the land use designation outlined in the growth policy. The OP3 zoning district is a current relatable district in the public and quasi-public land use designation. The R5.4 zoning district is a current relatable district in the residential medium land use Title 20, Section 208595, and state law states that government agencies may propose to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations. Whenever an agency proposes to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations, a public hearing must be held to allow for comment on the proposed use, and the agency shall attend the public hearing. City council does not have the power to deny or condition the request. This means there will be, there will not be a vote on the item. Missoula County Public Schools may move forward with the sign proposal following the public forum. However, they may consider comment. Title 20 defines agency as a board, bureau, commission, department, and authority or other entity of state or local government. Missoula County Public Schools are considered a local government agency and are permitted to vary from zoning through the public forum process. Here is an image of an earlier non-illuminated reader board sign in the same location at Russell Elementary School. Russell Elementary School is replacing the sign in this picture with an electronic illuminated dynamic display sign. Lewis and Clark Elementary does not currently have a sign in the location of the new proposed sign. Just like Russell Elementary, they will be installing an electronic dynamic display Here are images of where the proposed signs will be located. In both cases, the signs face residential zoning districts. Zoning code does not allow dynamic display signs to face residential districts. The proposed signs are approximately 25 square feet in area. The proposed signs will be located 15 feet off the ground. The signs will be a single-face illumination with an RGB message center. The size and orientation of the signs intend to message families and the public on events and important dates happening at the schools. Both signs will not comply with four requirements of zoning code. The signs will be located in the OP3 and R5.4 zoning districts, which is not normally permitted. In both cases, the signs will be oriented towards residential development and uses, which is not allowed by zoning code. The proposed signs are larger than the maximum allowed area in R5.4 and OP3 zoning districts. The maximum allowed area is 12 square feet, and the signs are proposed to be 25 square feet. The proposed signs exceed the maximum permitted area by 13 square feet. Additionally, the signs will be 15 feet off the ground, which exceeds the six-foot height maximum in the R5.4 and OP3 zoning districts. Lastly, zoning code requires that the dynamic display portion of the sign not exceed 50% of the total sign area. The proposed reader boards will be entirely dynamic displays. Staff does not have a recommended motion as no action is required. City staff and Missoula County Public Schools are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. And my apologies for getting us a little bit out of order with the presentation there. Appreciate that. So with that, we'll go ahead and ask for questions from council. And then because I already took public comment, but we were out of, out of order after hearing from the staff presentation, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment again. So any questions from council? Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
I was just going to ask, when you drive down Brooks, heading towards Higgins, Hellgate High School has a dynamic display sign, and I assume this is the same type of sign?
Ms. Lovelace?
Do you have any information regarding that?
Uh, yeah. Cassie Trippard, planning supervisor. That is correct. That is what a dynamic display sign looks like.
Thank you. Ms. Becerra?
Thanks. I remember when the display, the LED, I guess it is, signed for Lowell School came before council, or at least in the neighborhood, and there was quite a bit of concern about the illumination, the obnoxiousness of some of these signs, especially as you're driving. But I guess one question that I have is, do these have hours of operation? Do they turn off at night and during the summer? And wondering what kind of traffic information is used to determine the size and brightness of these signs? If anyone knows that, I'd be curious to know. I know that we don't have any jurisdiction and we can't vote on this, but just curious to know.
Yeah. So the applicant says that the signs will be turned off no later than, or be on until 10:00 p.m. at night, and then later turn on at 6:00 a.m. the next morning. But I do not have any information necessarily on the traffic, what was, what was done with the traffic study or anything regarding the signs.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right. And Ms. Trippard, I see your hand is up. Would you like to add some more information?
Yeah. I was just going to add that zoning code additionally limits how bright the signs can be, and that is not part of code that they are varying from. So the brightness will be in compliance with zoning code.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate that. Great. All right. So we've heard staff presentation and council comments. Are there any other public comments tonight on this agenda item? Okay. Not seeing any in the room. And I don't believe we have any online. Oh, looks like we have just one online, and that's Ms. Alana Van Epps? Van Eeps? Van Epps? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. I'm Alana Van Epps. I'm the principal at Lewis and Clark Elementary. And I just wanted to say that your comments, although there's not the voting ability, your comments are really important to us. So it's, it's helpful for us to hear what your concerns are, so as we use the displays that we're able to take those things into consideration and to be thoughtful in the neighborhood and passing traffic and so forth. So I just wanted to say that we appreciate your time and the information and feedback that you do share with us. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Principal Van Epps. Appreciate you being here. All right. Not seeing any other comment then. We will go and move on from this public hearing. No vote needed. All right. Great. So that was 9.2. We're going to go ahead and move on to 9.3. 9.3 is a referral and staff report on the Orchard Grove Annexation and Major 24 Lot Subdivision. And so we have a presentation by staff member Lauren Stevens this evening.
Hi, everyone. Let me get this up on my screen here. And I will probably turn my camera off while I present just to give my internet its best possible chance of making it through this. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right. So, good evening. My name's Lauren Stevens, senior planner with the Land Use and Permits Division of CPDI, here to present the requested annexation, zoning upon annexation, and 24 lot major subdivision named Orchard Grove. Oh, let's see. There it is. Okay. Before we jump into project specifics, I wanted to give an overview of the four motions that will be voted on by city council for this project. The first is to either adopt or deny the petition to be annexed into the city, and the subsequent motions will be to approve or deny the Orchard Grove preliminary plat application and the two requested variances from the city subdivision regulations. The subject property is located directly west of Reserve Street and Abutts Grove Street and Larkinwood Drive. It is approximately a quarter mile southeast of the Clark Fork River. The project includes two separate parcels, and the combined total area is just over three acres. If annexed, it would be within the Two Rivers Neighborhood Council and City Council Ward Six. Property owners within 150 feet were sent mailed notices, and no public comment has been received by staff at this time. The proposed Orchard Grove subdivision would result in 24 residential lots, which are proposed to have a mix of single detached houses and townhouse units. There are three existing residential duplex structures on site that will be converted into townhouse units. These are shown in light blue. Three other existing residential structures are proposed to be removed. The project includes improvements to Grove Street and Larkinwood Drive with a five-foot right-of-way dedication for Grove and a 10-foot dedication for Larkinwood. The project also includes a new proposed street named Magnolia Drive, which will be used to access 22 of the 24 lots. This will be designed as a home zone or woo-nurf street type, which is a street type where pedestrians, bicyists...
Oh, let's see. There it is, okay. Before we jump into project specifics, I wanted to give an overview of the four motions that will be voted on by city council for this project. The first is to either adopt or deny the petition to be annexed into the city, and the subsequent motions will be to approve or deny the Orchard Grove preliminary plat application and the two requested variances from the city subdivision regulations. The subject property is located directly west of Reserve Street and abuts Grove Street and Larkinwood Drive. It is approximately a quarter mile southeast of the Clark Fork River. The project includes two separate parcels, and the combined total area is just over three acres. If annexed, it would be within the Two Rivers Neighborhood Council and City Council Ward 6. Property owners within 150 feet were sent mailed notices, and no public comment has been received by staff at this time. The proposed Orchard Grove subdivision would result in 24 residential lots, which are proposed to have a mix of single detached houses and townhouse units. There are three existing residential duplex structures on site that will be converted into townhouse units. These are shown in light blue. Three other existing residential structures are proposed to be removed. The project includes improvements to Grove Street and Larkinwood Drive with a five-foot right-of-way dedication for Grove and a 10-foot dedication for Larkinwood. The project also includes a new proposed street named Magnolia Drive, which will be used to access 22 of the 24 lots. This will be designed as a home zone or woo-nurf street type, which is a street type where pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles share a travelway, and people and bikes have priority over cars. It will be a privately maintained street within a public access easement. A draft of the private road maintenance agreement was included in the submittal packet. A new sidewalk connection to the existing Reserve Street Trail will extend from Larkinwood Drive, and the required parkland dedication of .27 acres will be satisfied through a cash and lue payment. An existing irrigation ditch and lateral irrigation pipe on-site will be contained within irrigation easements. And here is the proposed preliminary plat showing the dedicated portions of right-of-way, the access utility and irrigation easements, and the new lot lines. The proposal includes a petition for annexation of the subject property, which abuts city limits at the Reserve Street and Grove Street right-of-ways and would fill in an existing gap left from previous annexations. The requested zoning designation upon annexation is RT 5.4, residential 5.4 two-unit townhouse. Sorry, getting my notes out of order. Okay. The city's annexation policy map is meant to show areas that tend to meet the policy's guidelines for potential annexation, but all annexations are to be evaluated on their individual merits based on the policy criteria. The policy classifies parcels into either Annexation Area A, which are those that generally do meet the guidelines and are prioritized for annexation, or Annexation Area B, which may meet fewer guidelines. The subject property is located in Annexation Area B, and this is likely due in part to the known high groundwater in this area. As mitigation, staff recommend a condition of approval prohibiting basements within the subdivision. Upon annexation, a parcel is to be zoned in accordance with the zoning amendment section of Title 20. This section contains review criteria to determine the most appropriate zoning designation upon annexation. Staff's assessment is that the proposed RT 5.4 zoning designation complies with the Title 20 criteria because it is consistent with the recommendations in the growth policy. The subject property has a future land use designation of residential medium per the RMissoula 2035 growth policy. This designation calls for a density between 3 and 11 dwelling units per acre, and the current relatable Title 20 zoning districts are RT 10, R8, R5.4, and RT 5.4. The RT 5.4 zoning district has the highest achievable density and greatest flexibility in residential building types of the four relatable districts. The property is currently zoned RM residential medium in the county. This zoning district permits a larger variety of residential building types, including tri, quad, and multiplexes, than all of the potential Title 20 zoning districts that could be applied. It also has a higher achievable density of 11 dwelling units per acre, whereas the RT 5.4 district has a maximum achievable density of eight dwelling units per acre. Additionally, the RM zone permits more non-residential uses than the city zoning districts, such as a medical clinic or an art gallery. Nearby parcels within city limits are zoned RT 10 or C1-4. The proposed zoning upon annexation is RT 5.4, which requires a minimum of 5,400 square feet of parcel area per dwelling unit, and allows detached houses, lot line houses, two-unit houses, and two-unit townhouses. The RT 5.4 zoning district would allow densities and development types compatible with the existing surrounding land uses. The review criteria for a subdivision includes compliance with the growth policy and zoning code, and identification and mitigation of any potential impacts to agriculture, agricultural water user facilities, local services, the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, and public health and safety. I'll give a quick summary of staff's conclusions for each criterion. We just discussed the land use designation of the property and noted that the requested zoning district does comply with the growth policy, so we'll jump to agriculture. The subject property contained small-scale agricultural use accessory to the residential use up through the late 1950s. Soils on the property are classified as urban land and are not considered prime farmland or prime farmland if irrigated. There is an existing irrigation ditch running along the southern boundary of the property and a lateral irrigation pipe running generally along the eastern property line. Staff recommends a condition of approval to require adequate easements for these facilities to allow for maintenance and prevent disturbance, and to ensure that downstream water users will not be impacted by the subdivision. An additional recommended condition of approval is to notify lot purchasers that they may continue to be assessed for irrigation water even though the water may not be deliverable. The parcel is surrounded by residential uses and does not abut any agricultural uses that may be impacted. Therefore, no adverse impacts to agriculture or agricultural water user facilities are foreseen if the recommended conditions of approval are imposed. Next, subdividers must identify and evaluate the impacts on relevant local services by the proposed subdivision to determine that it can be adequately served by either public or private facilities and services. All proposed lots will be connected to city sewer and water, and solid waste disposal will be provided by Republic Services. The required parkland dedication will be satisfied through a cash and lue payment. The subdivision will be served by city police and fire, and the installation of two new fire hydrants is proposed. Students in this subdivision would attend Hawthorne Elementary, CS Porter Middle School, and Big Sky High School. Both Grove Street and Larkinwood Drive will be improved with additional right-of-way dedicated, and a new proposed woo-nurf will provide access to the majority of the lots in the subdivision. The new proposed dwelling units will not contribute 200 or more new daily vehicle trips, and therefore a traffic study is not required for this development. Relevant agencies were contacted to provide comment on this subdivision proposal, and none of the comments that were received indicated any potential adverse impacts anticipated because of the subdivision. Breaking down the proposed road improvements, Grove Street is classified as a low-density urban local street, which requires a minimum right-of-way width of 70 feet. This project will provide half-street improvements to include a 10-foot wide travel lane, a parking lane, curb and gutter, a seven-foot wide boulevard, and a five-foot wide sidewalk. And there will be five feet of the subject property dedicated as public right-of-way. Larkinwood Drive is classified as a local residential street, which requires a minimum right-of-way width of 47 feet. The existing right-of-way is 27 feet wide. The applicants are proposing to dedicate 10 feet of their property as public right-of-way and will improve the street to include two 10-foot travel lanes, a parking lane, curb and gutter, and a seven-foot sidewalk. The applicants have applied for a variance to the required boulevard and have proposed this wider sidewalk and trees planted outside of the right-of-way as mitigation. This will be discussed further later on in the presentation. For the portion of Larkinwood Drive not adjacent to the subject property, the streets will be improved with two 10-foot paved travel lanes with gravel shoulders. As mentioned earlier, home zones or woo-nurfs are a street type where pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles share a travelway, and people and bikes have priority over cars. They typically have a reduced right-of-way width and include trees, bollards, or other street accessories and landscaped areas to modulate drive lanes. This helps to reduce vehicle speeds and enhance safety for all users. Per the city subdivision regulations, woo-nurfs are required to provide a circulation plan showing vehicular and pedestrian flows, and must be surfaced with a minimum of 25% textured or colored concrete, and 15% must be non-driveable landscaped area. They also need to provide a common overflow parking area at a rate of .5 spaces per dwelling unit. Magnolia Drive will be privately maintained by the property owners of lots accessed by the woo-nurf. The private maintenance will include snow removal, resurfacing, and surface maintenance. The maintenance of the landscaped areas along Magnolia Drive will be the responsibility of the adjacent lot owner, similar to other city lots maintaining boulevard landscaped A subdivider is required to identify any impacts to resources such as adjacent public lands, cultural resources, hydrological and soil characteristics, and vegetative cover. This property is not adjacent to public lands with natural resources and does not contain any critical plant communities. There are no existing surface water bodies, riparian vegetation, or wetlands identified on site. The property, like much of Missoula, is within the wildland urban interface, and the development covenants include the required information about creating defensible space for fire protection purposes. The property does not contain key wildlife habitat areas such as big game winter ranges or waterfowl nesting areas. However, it is likely within the range of bird species like the great blue heron and bald eagles. It is anticipated that the subdivision will continue to support birds and other small wildlife species that typically filter through developed areas. The development covenants provide Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks guidance on living with wildlife and how to minimize conflicts. Regarding cultural resources, the property contains an existing residential structure associated with early orchard homes area development that coincided with the prior agricultural use. The Montana State Historic Preservation Office holds that any structure over 50 years old may be eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants had an architectural engineering record report prepared for the existing structure at 2513 Bean Lane, and in conjunction with the city historic preservation officer, it was determined that the structure is not eligible for listing. Staff recommends a condition of approval that the full report be submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office to document the structure prior to any alterations taking place and prior to final plat approval. Staff concluded that minimal impacts to the natural environment, cultural resources, and wildlife habitat are foreseen as a result of this subdivision if the recommended conditions of approval are imposed. Lastly, a subdivider must demonstrate... Oh, just getting feedback, sorry. Is... Okay. A subdivider must demonstrate that the proposed subdivision will have no adverse impacts on conditions relating to public health and safety, including natural or man-made hazards, environmental health, emergency services, and nuisance land uses. The subject property does not contain steep slopes, regulatory flood plain, unstable soils, high voltage power lines, or high-pressure gas lines. There is high groundwater present on the property, and staff recommends a condition of approval prohibiting the construction of basements. The subdivision is within the utility services area boundary, and each dwelling unit will be required to connect to city sewer and water. The property is also within the air stagnation zone, and the development covenants include mitigation efforts such as the prohibition of wood burning devices and a requirement for driveways to be paved. Potential on-site nuisances such as noise, smoke, and odors are also addressed in the covenants. A recommended condition of approval prevents the amendment or deletion of these and other specific elements of the covenants without the written approval of the governing body. No adverse impacts to public health and safety are foreseen as a result of this subdivision if the recommended conditions of approval are imposed. The city subdivision regulations provide criteria for requesting a variance to the regulations when strict compliance would result in undue hardship and is not essential to the public welfare. The criteria include that the conditions which the request is based on are unique to the specific property, that undue hardship would result due to physical surroundings, parcel shape, or topographical conditions, that said hardship has not been created by the applicant, and that the granting of the variance would not cause an increase in public costs nor result in a threat to public health, safety, or welfare, or be injurious to other persons or property, and that it will not violate the provisions of the zoning ordinance or the growth policy. The applicants have submitted two variance requests. The first request is to the prohibition of lue streets, which are defined as a local street that begins and ends on the same street. Magnolia Drive, the proposed woo-nurf street, is classified as a lue street because both entrances intersect with Larkinwood Drive. This lue street design is necessary due to the existing pattern of development surrounding the subject property and the limited options for through connections. Adding a new access onto South Grove Street would cause conflict with existing driveway and street access points and would not meet specific design standards of the Public Works manual. Additionally, access onto Reserve Street is not feasible due to the significant existing grade change and would not be supported by the Montana Department of Transportation. Alternative options for access include a dead-end street or cul-de-sac, both of which are also prohibited in the city subdivision regulations. With the lue street design, there are two ingress and egress points for residents and allows fire trucks to access to all lots, and is therefore the preferable design. The lue street design does not violate the zoning ordinance or growth policy and will not cause an increase in public costs as it is to be privately maintained. The second variance request is to the local residential street standards for Larkinwood Drive. The required right-of-way width is 47 feet, and the existing width is only 27 feet. Part of this variance request is because the 20-foot deficit cannot be mitigated for the western portion of the street adjacent to neighboring private property. A right-of-way dedication of 10 feet is proposed to meet the required half-street width adjacent to this subdivision. The full 20 feet is not proposed to be dedicated because it would result in the loss of residential units and would create an unusual curve connecting the wider road section to the existing portion. Due to this still insufficient right-of-way width, the applicants have requested to omit the required seven-foot boulevard in order to fit the other required street elements. When requesting a variance to have curbside sidewalk, the subdivision regulations require a minimum seven-foot clear space for sidewalks on local streets. To accommodate this requirement, a one-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk easement has been proposed along the northern boundary of lots 5, 13, and 18. To further mitigate the absence of a boulevard, the applicant is proposing to add trees adjacent to the sidewalk on the respective lots. This variance request is due to the existing pattern of development adjacent to the property and the hardship that would be created by requiring the owners to acquire sufficient right-of-way from other properties. At its January 2 meeting, Planning Board voted 8 to 1 to recommend city council approve the two variance requests and the Orchard Grove preliminary plat application based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. The Planning Board does not consider or provide a recommendation on the resolution to annex. Discussion included excitement around the woo-nurf street type concept, but there were questions about emergency vehicle access and the reliability of the private maintenance structure. The application packet does include a swept path analysis showing how a standard city pumper fire truck could navigate from Grove Street to Larkinwood Drive and through the Magnolia Drive woo-nurf without issues. Regarding the private maintenance requirement of the woo-nurf, staff are proposing one additional recommended condition of approval, which will be included in a memo for city council's consideration prior to Wednesday's LUP meeting. The condition would require that a statement be included on the face of the plat and on each instrument of conveyance indicating that a purchaser or owner understands and agrees that private road construction, maintenance, and snow removal are the obligation of the owner or property owner's association, and that the city of Missoula is in no way obligated to perform such maintenance or upkeep. Another concern of the board was in regard to existing on-site residents who will be impacted by this project. IMEG provided information that the existing tenants in the easternmost duplexes being converted to townhouses will be able to stay in those units during the remodel and site construction. Other displaced households will be given the first right to purchase existing units, and one has already indicated their plans to relocate from a house to be demolished to purchase a unit in the third townhouse building. The applicants will provide ample transition in time for households that will need to move off-site, and they have been informed of the project throughout the process. Lastly, Planning Board expressed the desire to see higher density here to potentially increase affordability and noted that it is a key infill location next to existing Staff's recommendation is that city council adopts the resolution to annex and approves the Orchard Grove subdivision with two variance requests, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I believe we also have some IMEG representatives here that may want to share info.
Great, thank you, Ms. Stevens. We'll go ahead and invite the representatives from the applicant and developer to come on up. Or go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was just given the option to unmute. I was frantically raising my hand there. Not sure if I'll be able to share my screen or put a face to my voice over the internet here this evening, but I'll take an unmute function over nothing. Oh, there's a camera. At least you guys can see who's talking on the other end of this. Great, phenomenal. My name is Joe Dennert, and I work for... My name is Joe Dennert, and I work for the IMEAG office in Missoula. Good evening, Happy New Year. I'm excited to be back in front of council again. It's great to see some new faces and some familiar faces, as well as some new and familiar faces from the public. I appreciated those comments. I am joined this evening by my coworkers Danny Oberwiser and Tamara Ross, and we are representing the applicant for the Orchard Grove annexation, zoning upon annexation, and 24 lot major subdivision. All right, you guys are still with me. Hopefully, I don't lose connection here. Lauren, thanks again for your thorough presentation and obviously for the hard work you put in during the review process, as well as other city staff members that helped us navigate some of the more atypical components of this proposal. I think Wunorf being the forerunner of those. And really, the purpose of my brief intro here is to re-highlight that Wunorf component as it was the focus of discussion at the Planning Board, and some great questions were posed during that discussion. As Lauren covered, Magnolia Drive is the Wunorf Street type that's being proposed within the development. And, you know, it's an interesting street type by merit in that it's in the city's subdivision regulations, but rarely gets implemented because it really has to have the right components, the right circumstances for it to make sense for both the developer's side and the city's perspective. You know, the namesake is that living street type that has to prioritize the shared space along with lower speeds, traffic calming design, and really is intended to improve that pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile safety. In this particular case, the existing corridors for Larkin Wood and Grove, as well as the impossibility of connection to Reserve Street to the west, combined with the unique parcel shapes and the plans to repurpose a few of those existing structures, made the Wunorf style the most logical fit. I don't think I can share my screen here. But during Planning Board, I pulled up just a Google stock image of the Wunorf Street type, and it wasn't, definitely wasn't the best image in the world, and I just pulled it off of Google. But the purpose of that image, and I'll just describe it here, is there's a few design elements that really are hallmarks of the Wunorf Street type. And that are, those are textured or scored pavement. Sometimes it's inlays, like brick inlays, or some other unique pavement design, and then a modulating street design that's highlighted by alternating parking spaces. In every case of the Wunorf Street type, though, the purpose of the roadway design is to create that living street type where all the modes of travel are planned for simultaneous use, and there might even be some board members that are more familiar than I am. I had to dive in and learn more about this street type in this project. You know, during our discussion at Planning Board, the question of speed limits came up, and I wanted to bring that up here again this evening because, as stated in the Planning Board hearing, you know, speed limit hasn't been determined at this time for the roadway. That takes place during city stage review. However, it's the physical form itself that actually serves to calm the traffic. And I'm not saying the speed limit's arbitrary, but it's like a roundabout. The meandering roadway design with a Wunorf and the alternating parking and the boulevards throughout, combined with that textured, scored paving, it all serves to slow folks down while they're driving. You know, and if you look up a Wunorf Street design on Google or you try to find one, what you'll see in almost all examples is pretty high density. Now, there really aren't a lot of examples that we can look to in Missoula currently. But for the most part, Wunorf's are associated with the highest land uses, and that was definitely one of the driving factors behind implementing this design in Orchard Grove. As Lauren mentioned, you know, this is infill development, and as such, it should prioritize the highest use of land, which this project does. As Lauren also mentioned in her presentation, the question of emergency services came up in regards to that Wunorf design, and I just think it bears restating because that specific element is what drove the eight-to-one vote. We had to ensure that the proposed design could meet the emergency service requirements, emergency services requirements by the city, and even included that firetruck turning analysis with our application to satiate any concerns or satisfy those concerns. The last element of the project that I think I'd like to highlight here before I wrap up is the plan to keep a number of the existing structures currently on the property and repurpose them on the proposed lots. You know, this was another aspect of the discussion that came up, and as Lauren mentioned, the current landowners do have a plan for the existing residents to not only remain in the structures while the proposed remodeling to the windows and siding, et cetera, takes place, but also offer either the first right of refusal to purchase or stay in the event that they're retained as a rental. You know, this repurposing is something we don't see very often for major subdivisions in the city, so we're pretty excited to have that be an aspect of the project. It makes sense because it's infill. Anyway, before I wrap up, I just want to thank CPDI and city engineering again for the quality review and comments throughout this process, and restate that Danny, Tamara, and myself are here if there's any discussion or questions from council, and if not, maybe there'll be more discussion or questions when we head into LUP this Wednesday, and I look forward to it. Thank you so much for your time.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Dennert. Appreciate that additional information. And so after then, staff presentation and applicant presentation, we'll open up to council questions. And Ms. Cheryl, question?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. With regard to the cash-in-lau of parkland, what would the, like, what would the size of a park be? What would be required for this? If we didn't do cash-in-lau of parkland, what would be required for this size development?
Yeah, the required parkland dedication here is equivalent to 0.27 acres, so a little bit over a quarter of an acre.
Okay, and I'm not opposed to that. I think that it makes way more sense to kind of build some parks that are bigger for communities than have a bunch of tiny ones. So what is it? Do you know what the distance to the nearest park is?
I don't know if I have that off the top of my head. I know it's within a specified radius that the Parks Department looks at when they determine if cash-in-lau will be suitable. Let me see if I can find a measurement.
Mayor Davis, if I may interject, I believe it's Liffrey Park is the closest one to there.
I'm sorry, Ms. Maseka, which park is that?
I believe it's Liffrey Park, off of River Road.
Okay. Great.
Okay, that's fine. May I have one more question?
Ward 6 representative, thank you for making that comment on that. You bet, absolutely. Ms. Cheryl, go right ahead.
I do suggest that everyone look up the Wunorf design because I looked it up here, and it's an interesting design with some origins in the Netherlands. It's kind of, but my last question is around Hawthorne School and the capacity. Have you, has there been discussion with the principal of that school?
As far as I've seen, when the agency notices were sent out, I don't believe, Joe, you can correct me, that we got any response from the school district for that inquiry.
Yeah, Lauren, that's correct. We didn't get any response, but at least in this particular case, we avoided some of the snafu that happened in 2023 where it was going to the wrong address. We confirmed it. It all went to the right folks. It was both a physical delivery, a mailer, and then also an email that went out to the appropriate addresses.
Okay, thanks. I have no idea how, what capacity Hawthorne School is, but I know that we have had some comments from Hellgate Elementary, from the principal on another project, and I just want to really be sensitive to that.
Great, thank you. Before moving on to the next council comment, I'll just mention that if you are interested in seeing a Wunorf in Missoula, Homewards Fire Week Court project off of Russell has one, and it's smaller than this proposed one, but has been around for about 20 years, and it works quite well. And of course, design matters on just about everything, but if there is one you want to physically see, I can get to the address on that. All right, Mr. Carlini.
I just wanted to clarify, is the developer covering the entire cost of the loop street?
The maintenance of that, the ongoing maintenance, will be split amongst the lot owners that are using that to access. So it's 22 of the 24 lots, and there's an agreement that basically I think they would all just pay into some kind of maintenance fund, and that's how that would be maintained.
And for the construction of it, it's entirely covered by the developer cost paying for it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions from council? None here in the room and not seeing any online? Then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anybody in the room wish to make public comment on this agenda item this evening? Mr. Spitzmacher.
... of the vicinity, Mr. Spitzmacher, S.P.I.T.Z. I find it's quite fascinating that they're going to restructure a piece of property for a higher tax value to the city. It's interesting how they're going to reformulate a piece of property that seems to be already formulated. And cul-de-sac looks like it would be more advantageous with the neighboring property at Red Osser where they got a cul-de-sac. It looks like it fits in there really well, over and above the loop idea. That depends on the developer.
Thanks for your comment. Any others in the room tonight? All right, how about anybody online, then? All right, not seeing any. Then, my understanding is that there will be a motion made, but there will not be a vote until January 22nd. So, Mr. Nugent, this is a doozy. Would you like to do all four motions at once?
Certainly, Mayor Davis, and we're getting off on the right foot on this. We're gonna do all land use and planning motions correct.
All right.
So yes, we will make the motions, put them on the floor in case there is anybody that wants to do work in committee on Wednesday, and then they'll come back to council for final consideration. So I move the city adopt a resolution to annex the subject property legally described as a portion of Lot 42 of Coben and Dismore's Orchard Homes, number one, located in the southeast one-fourth section of 19, section of Section 19, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Missoula County, Montana, as shown on Exhibit B, and zone upon annexation to RT 5.4, residential 5.4, two-unit townhouse, subject to the conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. I further move the city council approve the variance request from Article 3, Section 3-020.5.5A of the city subdivision regulations, which prohibits cul-de-sacs, loops, and circle streets, and turnarounds, and dead-end streets, to allow Magnolia Drive, a proposed home zone Wunorf Street, to connect to Larkin Wood Drive in two locations, resulting in a loop street based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. I further move that the city council approve the variance request from Article 3, Section 3-020, Table 2A of the city subdivision regulations for Larkin Wood Drive, which does not meet the required 47-foot right-of-way width, and is proposed to have a seven-foot-wide curbside sidewalk with no boulevard adjacent to the subject property based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And I further move the city council approve the Orchard Grove subdivision preliminary plat application subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Well done. Excellent, all right. So we have a large motion on the floor. As you know, there are actually four separate motions made, and this will, like we said, not have a vote until January 22nd. So this will go ahead, and motions are on the floor, goes back to committee on Wednesday.
That is correct, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that, Mr. Nugent. All right, that then brings us to our next agenda item, which is item 9.4. That is, oh, I just want to thank again Ms. Stevens and Mr. Dennert, thank you for your presentation. All right, moving on, we'll go to 9.4, Fiscal Year 2023 Fourth Quarter Budget Amendments. And we'll give that over to the staff member, Lee Griffin. Hello?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Good evening, everyone. I am Lee Griffin. I am the Finance Director for the City of Missoula. I am bringing forward the fourth quarter and final budget amendments for fiscal year Turn off my camera and share my screen quickly. I have too many screens up, sorry about that. Thank you for your patience, folks. So these are the final amendment, budget amendments for fiscal year 2023, and most folks know that, well, fiscal year 2023 actually ended on June 30th, but we bring these forward at the end of our annual financial audit, which is ongoing right now. We anticipate finalizing that at the end of January, and these amendments need to be passed by city council in order to finalize that audit. When that audit is finalized, we will be bringing that forward to the Budget and Finance Committee. We will bring in that independent audit firm to make a presentation, and that should be sometime in early spring. So this amendment requests that we increase the budget for total city revenues by $6,959,978 and budgeted appropriations by $11,910,255. And these amendments are what we call housekeeping items, as these have all been in before, the majority of them have been before city council in one fashion or another, and they might also come about from work that happens during that audit. And there's an exhibit that is attached to this item in the agenda, and there are quite a few items in here, so I won't go through all of them, but what I will do is I'll point out a few items of note within this exhibit. And that is that for any expenditure that we increase or add to the budget, we have to show where the funding is going to come from. So those expenditures are shown in the two farmost right columns, the amounts and an accounting code, and then just to the left of that, we've got revenues and the revenue amount and an accounting code. And if these are not coming from newly identified revenues or transfers between funds, which many of the revenues shown are, then we will show that they're being funded by existing fund balance in that respective fund. And those are all listed over to the left under the descriptions. Now, it seems like the dollar amounts that we're amending this year are really large dollar amounts, but one thing I want folks to note is that much of that comes from the MRA budget amendments that we're attaching here. Previously, we used to bring them forward as two separate items, but there's no particular reason for us to do that, and a lot of the dollar amounts that you see under the MRA funds are transfers in between MRA funds. So they have quite a few different funds where they account for their respective activities. So while that might be grossing up a dollar amount, it's actually, has to do with the transfer between funds more so than money necessarily going outside of the organization. And at the very end of our exhibit, we just wanted to note for folks that we're closing out the planning fund, as all of that activity is now within the general fund in the CPDI division. And I am here for any questions, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Griffin. Are there any city council questions? Not seeing any in the room? None online? All right. Any public comment this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right, great. Thank you, Ms. Griffin, appreciate that. And so that, again, we will have a finalized hearing on January 22nd.
Okay, great. Point of order, so you close the public hearing?
Oh, thank you.
And then January 22nd, I will make the, well, whoever's the appropriate person will make the motion, and then, so anyway, you close the public hearing.
This evening? Great, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you for the point of order, appreciate that. All right. Great, and we'll go ahead and move on then to the next item. All right, thank you. The next item is 9.5, Building Permit Fee Schedule, and we have Kirsten Hands, excuse me, and Walter Banziger. I don't know if you're both here this evening? You are, great, all right. We're ready for you, whenever you're ready to give the staff report.
Great, Mayor, City Council, good evening. I'm Kirsten Hands. I'm the Business and Finance Manager for Community Planning, Development, and Innovation, and we have increases to the building fee schedule this evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, great. So the attached resolution reflects increases to the Community Planning, Development, and Innovation Building Fee Schedule. Consistent with Montana Code annotated 50.60.106.2G, the city is authorized to collect fees for activities in support of reviewing and issuing building permits and for building code enforcement. and for building code enforcement. The municipality shall place excess collected fees in a reserve account necessary to enforce building code operations for up to 36 months. Per MCA, collection and expenditure of fees and charges must be fully documented and are reported annually to the state of Montana. Due to recent inflationary increases, the department expenses associated with service increases as well as day-to-day operations and maintenance, the reserve account has recently been used to cover expenses in excess of 2022 fee revenues. These additional budget expenditures are associated with transfers of software maintenance from the general fund to the building fund, so our SLA program, annual software service agreements, and other building-related fees, such as staff salaries, staffing expansion, and equipment and software purchases to maintain service levels due to recent application demand and growth. These fees have not been increased in 12 years. Oops, there we go. The Development Services Division of CPDI is requesting an inflationary increase associated with the building division's building permit fees in the amount of 7% mirroring other standard increases in service fees across the city. The increased request will be applied to all building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and demolition permit fees as well as plan review fees, moving permits, reinspection fees, and reactivation fees. This increase is consistent with and in line with the recent city council-approved inflationary fee increases related to development services, zoning and land use application review fees, business licensing and permit fees, and public works and mobility's application and review fees. The City of Missoula has not enacted a fee increase related to building division fees in 12 years, like I stated earlier. The fee increase is requested to maintain and improve current operational levels. We anticipate applying it annually to ensure that we have the systems and capacity to meet the expectations of the development community moving forward. So, the motion that will be on the agenda during final consideration on January 22nd, 2024, is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council amending the building permit fee schedule by applying a 7% increase to the fees included in the schedule as noted on Exhibit A of the resolution and making those fees effective on February 1st, 2024. And Walt Banziger, our Deputy Director for Development Services, is here with me if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Kirsten. Walt? Walter?
Hi, yes. I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you. Any council questions? Yes, Ms. Fesica.
I guess I have a procedural question on the agenda tonight. It says that we're adopting it tonight. However, during the presentation, it says that we are adopting it later on this month. So, when, I guess, when are we adopting it?
Oh, go ahead, Kirsten.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Ms. Fesica. I have not read the actual agenda for this evening, but per our referral to city council, we were going to have this set for final consideration on January 22nd, 2024. So, I can check with the clerk's office on what's on the agenda, but that was our intent with the referral.
So, are we adopting it or voting to adopt it tonight or on the original intent of the referral?
And I was just looking at what you were referring to, and you're talking about the actual referral that was attached to the committee agenda that has tonight's vote?
I just want to know if I need to address my concerns tonight or at a later date?
I believe you could address those tonight, and my understanding, public hearing is tonight. Final consideration is the 22nd, and they'll go into effect February 1st.
Okay, I'll wait until comment time then. Thank you.
Okay, all right. You bet, absolutely. Other questions? Mr. Carlini?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I was just wondering what potential trade-offs would be to raising these fees? For example, how does it affect, like, home prices? Or how would this affect, like, small developers who want to add on to their house, for example, compared to large developers? So, I was just wondering if you could maybe tell us about the downsides of raising these fees?
The fee increases for the smaller projects would be lower than larger because they're prorated across the board, depending on the project. It does increase the cost of the building permit, essentially.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. As far as the 7% increase goes, are we looking at just increases of 7% on flat-feed permits? Or are we looking at 7% increases on permit rates that are tied to value of projects?
Those permit, let's see. I'll have to pull up the actual permit form, but I believe they're across the board on all permits, anything related to a building permit. So, this would include smaller projects like HVAC permits, the mechanical permits, the plumbing permits, the electrical permits, and building permits. And they are prorated, in some cases, based on the value of the project, and in some cases, they are flat-fee. So, it affects both.
Thank you. That might be something I'll look into before the final consideration because the ones that are based on value would already be experiencing the inflation. So, I would be wary about doing a double hit on that.
This item does not go back to committee, is that correct? Stays here, okay. Okay? Any other questions from council? Not seeing any online? All right, how about public comment?
My name is Gene Mosted, Mosted Construction. Yeah, I had some questions a little bit on what Mr. Nugent had brought up here just recently. Since they've been evaluating the permits on values already, and the values of building permits have gone up quite substantially along with building costs and everything, I know then in my business, we've noticed increased revenue based on our markups, but a lot of it is just because of the increase in building costs. So, I would think that the increase in the building costs in the way they do their evaluations should have more than given them more permit money to deal with their budget. And I think there's a case in point when they're saying that they haven't raised any fees in 12 years. There's a reason for that, and that's because of that same scenario, is they're already getting more fees based on the increased valuations. So, I don't know why they need another 7% because they've been getting a raise every year as the value of homes go up. And another thing that I would like to comment on is that if we could get more building permits through that department quicker, you would increase your revenue without raising fees. And the... We've been asking and asking for years for that to happen, and we're kind of, it seems like we're at a stalemate on the efficiencies of what can happen there. And the reason I bring that subject up is that we, as builders in the building association, we look at what's happening in other cities and why it's happening so much slower here than it is. Like Billings, for instance, you can get a permit over there in a couple of weeks. And we're anywhere from six to eight weeks and sometimes longer here. And we just keep not getting the right kind of answers or not getting the right responses, and I'm not sure why. And in this referral, you know, they're not making any commitments to that either to make things more efficient down there so we can get things through quicker. I know developers from Billings that wanted to come to Missoula, and they left and went to Helena because Helena, again, you can get your permits in a couple of weeks rather than six to eight weeks, or you can get your development through a lot quicker also. And the one party from Billings was going to do a development with, like they did in Billings, which is called Josephine's Crossing. And it is the type of development for lower-income people than Missoula really needs. And they came into Missoula, spent a year here looking around and looking at what it would take to get it done, and they left. And I know these guys personally. My son used, had a house built by them in Billings when he was working over there. And so, I know there's other options. There's got to be. And so, I would appreciate that you looked real hard at that 7% increase because I think they're already getting their fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosted. Any other public comments? Okay, not seeing any in the room? How about online before we go back to council comments? All right, not seeing any online. Just check my parliamentary procedure here. Okay, so, back, Ms. Cheryl, you're wanting to make another, ask another question?
I don't, I'm not, I'm not interested in asking a question, but I just did want to flag for staff that when this comes back, I'd like to see and understand what the other options are with regard to making these changes instead of the valuation of the home because I think Mr. Nugent makes an interesting point. So, I'm just flagging that for staff.
Okay.
I don't need it tonight.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. So noted. All right. Ms. Jones is going to join us back at the horseshoe. And so, we have a public hearing that final consideration will be January 22nd. I do believe a motion is to be made tonight? Nope, nope, just the public hearing. Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Great, okay. So... Did you have another comment?
Well, it's because we're not going back to committee with it. We don't need a motion until final consideration.
Gotcha, perfect. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll finalize this on January 22nd. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your presentation. All right, that gets us through all of our public hearings. Thank you, well done. All right, so we go onto committee reports. Committee reports. We don't have any items there to bring to the forefront? Righty. So, that brings us then to new business, where we have quite a bit of new business. So, the first, are you ready? Okay. First item is 11.1, and that is the Fort Missoula Commons Appeal. And Ms. Pien, are you online to give a staff report? Do you have a second here? Mr. Nugent?
Madam, I don't believe that she is. Mr. Sudbury just put his hand up, but I'm happy to make the motion when you're ready for it.
Great, okay. All right, we'll hear from Mr. Sudbury and then come back to you. Great, thank you. Mr. Sudbury?
Oh, I, yeah, I was just going to speak in the absence of Ms. Pien, if she's not on. We have, just as by way of background for people who may not remember or for the new councillors, there was a decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission to deny building permits for a project out at Fort Missoula. In May of 2023, the applicant timely filed an appeal on that denial, and we have been working with the applicant who is seeking to appeal the decision to city council to set dates that work for both the applicant and for city council. We've kind of set over this decision a couple of times, but the applicant is ready to move forward, and the city staff is ready to move forward. So, we have some proposed dates to set, and we have a work plan that's been developed with the, in conjunction with the applicant. And so, everybody's kind of ready to move forward and have this heard in front of the city council.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Mr. Sudbury. I appreciate that. So, it's basically a staff report, and so, we'll go ahead and make a motion and then take public comment on that motion. Does that sound right?
Yep. All right, thank you, Mayor Davis. I move city council set a public hearing on February 5th, 2024 to hear the appeal of the May 3rd, 2023 Historic Preservation Commission Decision Regarding Fort Missoula Commons Post-Hospital Historic Preservation Permit Application at 3255 Lieutenant Moss Road pursuant to the city council's role found in Title 20, Section 20.8.5.085P of the Missoula Municipal Code.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Motion. Mr. Motion, Mr. Nugent. Mr. Motion, you are today! Yeah! All right, motion is on the floor. Is there any, is there any public comment? Please, come on up. Say and spell your name, please.
Hello, my name is Ross Best. You had a similar issue before you in September, and you set a hearing for October. The next week, I came in and shared some concerns with you about the schedule and its fairness to the general public. I have those same concerns now. The deadline for the briefs, which can be up to 20 pages long a piece, is Thursday before the Monday night public hearing. The general public is to be provided access to those briefs by the end of the day on Friday. This means that the general public has the weekend and only one business day to review the briefs and associated documents. That's really not fair to those of us in the general public who want to understand what's going on as best we can. And some of us will want to prepare comments based on our understandings. So, as I did in September, I want to suggest that you should be providing the public So as I did in September, I want to suggest that you should be providing the public at least a week between the time the briefs become available and the time the public hearing is held. In July, the Missoula Current quoted Mark Sturmitz, the lawyer for the appellant, as saying, "We don't want it, the hearing, to be an unfocused, all-comerds situation." Well, he doesn't understand that public hearings are all-comerds situations, but he goes on to say, "There are going to be some specific questions we are going to urge the council to consider. The more definition we can bring to bear on the process, the better it will be for everyone." Well, I agree with that. And as things stand right now, the general public has no way of knowing the specific grounds for the appeals, because the appellate appeal letter from June only generally discussed what the issues might be, and it didn't go into necessary details. For example, it raised the possibility of conflicts of interest among members of the Historic Preservation Commission, but it gave no details, not even the names of the sources of those possible conflicts of interest. So I would encourage you to modify your work plan, and if necessary, change the date for the public hearing so that the public, and also the city staff, and save the fort, have an opportunity to respond to the substance of the brief from the appellant when he becomes available. I'd like to point out that there are some typos, I guess, in the part of the work plan called "post-public hearing briefs." It refers to a 1019 agenda, October 19, I assume. That must be left over from a previous version of the document. Also, the follow-up briefs are due the day after they are supposed to be provided to the public. So there's some problems with the work plan. This is an important issue before you. There's widespread opposition to the proposed development and demolition. And of course, it's important to the developer. It's a complex situation. And the general public has a right to expect a reasonable opportunity to be informed about what's at issue and what the arguments are going into the public hearing whenever that occurs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Best. All right. Any other public comment this evening? Is there any online? That's okay. All right, not seeing any. This item, basically, we've had a motion, public comment, and does this motion close? No. Yeah, it doesn't go, yeah, we're setting the hearing. So it closes the public hearing. And right now, the public hearing will be set for February 5th, '24. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I was just gonna clarify the schedule, kind of in regards to the public comment, but just to make sure all our new council members are on the same page as well. What we are doing is scheduling the appeal hearing for February 5th, which is at our normal council meeting. Then in the work plan attached to the agenda item, you can see that there are briefs due post that public hearing. And then there will be a special City Council meeting February 22nd at 9:00 a.m., which will include public comment. So there will be opportunity for the public to ask questions and respond to any provided documents as well. And I will work with council leadership and Ms. Pahan to make sure the dates are correct on that.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Nugent. Appreciate you reviewing that again. Great. Okay. Yes, please. Yeah, go ahead. Council comment. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, Mr. Nugent. And I just wanted to add, the schedule as it's written, that is a typo. Let me pull this up. City Council Agenda 10/19, that is a typo. This would be on the council agenda in early, well, mid to late February. So I don't have a calendar in front of me for that date. But we would have the second briefs due, which are only five pages long, on February 20th, and then February 22nd would be the workday. So, and that, since those are only five pages long, that's very brief. It's a very brief brief to read. I also wanted to just comment that there will be briefs filed at the beginning, there will be a hearing on a Monday night, then there's a period of time while the post-briefs are written, and then there's a workday. During that entire time period, people can be submitting public comment via email to the portal that has been created, which is exactly how it occurred with the Merck. People were able to submit public comment via email during that entire time period, as well as coming in person to the February 5th and February 22nd events. So there's a lot of opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Other council comments? Okay, not seeing any online. Okay. Public hearing is closed, and the hearing date is set. Thank you for that clarification as well. All right. So then we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. I see, I'm being flagged over here. Yeah. Oh, we have to vote to set it. Lord. It's been a few weeks. All right. Ms. Trimble, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Roll call vote on setting the hearing for February 5th, beginning with Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Asika?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
That passes unanimously with 12 in favor and none opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Great. Okay, now I think we can move on. Thanks, everybody. These are probably equally confusing for me, so here we go. We're ready to move on to 11.2, which is election of the City Council President. So, Council Rule Number 28, a majority of the full council is required to elect the council president, and the City Council President candidates shall be those individuals who have notified the City Council in the manner required pursuant to Rule 27A, election of officers. New nominations for City Council President may not be made unless there have been two successful roll call votes wherein the votes cast were identical each time. So Ms. Trimble, I hope you have my back on this one, in case that's something we need to do. All right. So I do believe we have ready for a nomination on the floor, and Ms. Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you. I've had the honor to be president for the last couple of years, and in leadership for several years before that. And at this juncture, I am really thrilled to nominate Counselor Amber Sherrill for this position, who did submit accurately an email ahead of time pursuant to our rule. So she is totally legal. Want that noted on the record. And I just wanted to nominate her because I think she is thoughtful, she is a hard worker, she shows up, she does her homework, she asks good questions, she has carefully thought out comments that she brings to the floor on items, and I really appreciate that. And I think it is a, this juncture is just the right thing to have Ms. Sherrill serve as president. So I would like to nominate her.
Great. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Sherrill, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Okay, excellent.
Feel like I'm getting married here. I like you too, Gwen.
I have presided over a couple of those, too, so. All right, excellent. So, so we have a nomination on the floor. And at this time, I assume we open it up to any other nominations for president, and if we do, we have to go through a roll call. Votes, is that correct? Are there any other nominations for council president? Okay. Not seeing any. Then, I think we go ahead and vote on this item. Oh, sorry, public comment. Yes, hello. So, election of City Council President, the nomination for Counselor Amber Sherrill has been made. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any, any online? All right. Not seeing any online either. All right. Great. Absolutely. Council comments, please. Mr. Nugent?
All right. I am happy to support my ward four partner for council president. And I first want to start by thanking current President Jones for serving as council president in probably what was the toughest council president stretch the city of Missoula has ever had, I think. And I think you did it very well and handled it with grace. And I and many others appreciate it, and we were lucky to have your willingness. And I am thankful you remain on council. Ms. Sherrill, I appreciate your desire to work with everybody and bring communication to the forefront. And I've enjoyed, even in the last couple of months, as we've been kind of working with, towards a new council with bringing forward new ideas and encouraging collaboration. And I think that you are the right person for this job right now, and I look forward to supporting you and working with you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Any other council comments this evening? All right. Oh, great. Thank you, Ms. Savage.
I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Nugent just said. I think that, Amber, you are the right person at this time to do this. And I have very much appreciated working with you just over the past couple of months as we sort of moved toward this transition. And do want to deeply, deeply thank Gwen. I agree, it had to be two of the toughest years that probably anyone has ever served as the president of council. Countless appointments and elections, and you just did a great job, and you always took time to answer all of my questions, which I really, really appreciated. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Savage. Ms. Becerra?
Thanks. I too want to thank Ms. Gwen Jones for serving as our president. Not only does she do an excellent job at being president, but also was interim mayor for a little while. And I'm sure that wasn't contemplated when signing up for the job. And she did it well. And I just, you laid a really good foundation for this council, and it's appreciated. And look forward to working with Ms. Sherrill.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Yes, please. Ms. Fasika?
I also wanted to thank Ms. Gwen Jones for, like Ms. Becerra said, it wasn't, she did not intend to be the incumbent mayor with a, I know I disagree with Ms. Jones and the late Mayor Engen on a lot of things. However, I really respect you, and I respect how you have helped me, held my hand through a lot of things. And I really appreciate your kindness and your thoughtfulness throughout this entire process. So thank you. And then I look forward to working with Ms. Sherrill on the next, at least, two years. So, thank you both.
Great. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Fasika. All right. Any other council comments this evening? Nope. Not seeing any online. All right. So then I think we have a motion made. We've heard from the public, we've heard from council, we're ready for a vote. Great. Ms. Trimble, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. And pursuant to our nominations, I believe that we will be stating the name of the person they are voting for, is that correct?
Yes. Is that, we're stating the name?
Yes, okay.
Oh, stating the name of the person they're voting for. So everybody in their vote has to state that they're voting for Amber Sherrill. We think that's the rules. Is that the rules?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go with that. That sounds great.
All right. Starting with Farmer.
Amber Sherrill.
Jones?
Amber Sherrill.
Jordan?
Cheryl.
Nugent?
Sherrill.
Savage?
Cheryl.
Sherrill.
Cheryl.
Asika?
Sherrill.
Nelson?
Sherrill.
Campbell?
Sherrill.
Anderson?
Sherrill.
Becerra?
Sherrill.
And Carlino?
Sherrill.
And that's 12 votes in favor.
Wonderful. Thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Sherrill. All right. And I'd like to take this moment also to thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Really appreciate all of your leadership and time spent as president. Thank you. The guidance is real. All right, excellent. So that means that we are moving on to number 11.3, which is the election of council vice president. I read the blurb on the agenda. I'm gonna be honest, I don't actually quite understand it. City Council Vice President candidates shall be nominated by any member of the City Council immediately preceding the City Council vote. Unsuccessful candidates for City Council President may be included in the nominations for City Council Vice President. And I see that Ms. Anderson online has her hand up.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And thankfully, we're all in agreement for our choice for president, and I hope that we will continue to be in agreement. It's my honor to nominate Mirta Becerra for the role of City Council Vice President. And when appropriate, I'd like to speak to it.
Great. Okay. Ms. Anderson, thank you. So a nomination for Ms. Mirta Becerra is on the floor. Ms. Becerra, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
Okay. Wonderful. Excellent. All right. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to public comment before we turn it over to council comments. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this motion? Not seeing any in the room. Not seeing any online. All right. We'll turn that over to council comments. Are there any council comments this evening? Oh, Stacy, my apologies.
Thanks. I didn't know how much to speak. Well, it has been my pleasure to serve as council vice president for the last number of years as well. And I'm excited to pass the baton to Ms. Becerra, who is a wonderful human being. As we all have had the pleasure of getting to know her. She also brings a really interesting perspective as having been a staff member for the city. Lots of different, really interesting background, asks good questions, does her homework, and is willing to put in the hard work, because it is not an easy road. So hopefully, it's smoother sailing going forward. But I'm really excited to work with Ms. Becerra and Ms. Sherrill and all the rest of my council colleagues moving forward. And I'm excited to see the new ideas that they bring to the roles of vice chair and chair. And I will still try my best to be your resident parliamentarian, but I'm excited to work with Ms. Becerra and see her in this new leadership position.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And you know that I'll appreciate your resident parliamentarian know-how. So thank you for that. Appreciate that. Any other council comments? Yes, please, Ms. Sherrill.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, everyone, for your vote of confidence in me. And I hope you feel the same way about Ms. Becerra. I'm, I feel like this is a great combination, actually. You know, Mirta and I, if you go back and look at many of our meetings, sometimes we really, we disagree, which I think is great. But we're able to disagree, and we're able to move on. And I think that that is something that she's good at. She is, has been just, just a very good, solid base on this council. And I think she's very thoughtful about the decisions she makes. She's very detailed in those decisions. She comes from a planning background, which I do not. And I think that that's gonna be really helpful for leadership. So, and all those other nice things Stacy said. So I would be privileged to serve with her in leadership.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Sherrill. Mr. Nugent, please.
Thank you. I would echo what my colleague Ms. Sherrill said. And I do want to say thanks to Ms. Anderson for serving as our vice president, again, in a wild time. And I should have said this about Ms. Sherrill as well, but I was excited when both of you indicated that you were interested in holding these positions. And Mirta, I've enjoyed serving with you on the committees we work more closely on, yours and mine, LUP and Public Works, as well as the perspective you bring to council with kind of the detailed look that I think sometimes some of us overlook from time to time. And I'm looking forward to you serving in this role. And again, thanks for stepping up to do it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Ms. Farmer?
Yeah, I also wanted to echo what everyone's commented about Ms. Becerra. I, my wardmate here, I also have asked her several times, are you absolutely sure that you want to do this? Because it is a lot of work, and it is hard work. And I know that Ms. Becerra is up for the challenge. And she has proven over and over again that she is a trustworthy counselor, and she asks tough questions, gives very thoughtful answers. And I ask her questions all the time, every day, and she's always giving me really thoughtful answers. So I really appreciate that, and think she'll be a perfect candidate for it. And thank you also to Ms. Anderson for serving during a very hard time. I know that it was tricky a lot of times, but you also answered several of my questions. And I really appreciate all your thoughtfulness as you guided us through, well, my one year, but for your last four years. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Ms. Jones?
I'll just briefly add to what everyone else is saying. And first of all, say thank you, Stacy, for being vice president. It is a lot of work. You were totally up for it and stepped in at a really hard time. Not only had we lost Mayor Engen, but all sorts of upheaval from economic impacts from the pandemic, which we are still experiencing. But it's been a lot. So I appreciate all of your work, Stacy. And she's one of the smartest people at this table. So I always am glad Stacy's on council. And Mirta, you're gonna be great as vice president. You bring fresh energy and an incredibly hard work ethic and insightful thought process to all of this. And it's very much appreciated. So I look forward to working with you after I vote on you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jones. Anybody else this evening? Ms. Becerra?
I just want to say thank you to Stacy Anderson for your nomination. And also, you know, we're gonna continue to rely on you for the abundant knowledge that you have about just our rules, regulations, and just overall base of knowledge that you have always brought to the table. So I appreciate everything that you have done. brought to the table. So, I appreciate everything that you have done.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Basara. Any other comments?
All right. Ms. Tremble, before we go to a roll call vote, I just also want to thank Ms. Stacy Anderson for her time serving as vice president. And appreciate the leadership that you'll continue to show here on council and look forward to continued service. Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Tremble, we're ready.
Okay, by acclamation of name, beginning with Jones.
Basara.
Jordan?
Basara.
Nugent?
Basara.
Savage?
Basara.
Cheryl?
Basara.
Basika?
Basara.
Nelson?
Basara.
Campbell?
Basara.
Anderson?
Basara.
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 Carlino?
Basara.
And Farmer?
Basara.
That is unanimous with 12 votes.
Wonderful. Ms. Tremble, thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to working with new president and vice president and the full council in the new year here. Thank you. All right. So, that brings us to the last new business item, which is 11.4. And that's city council memberships appointment by president. So, I do believe that is the new president. But that is, let's see, the statement here says, after these two elections, pursuant to a separate new business item on the city council agenda, the individual elected city council president shall appoint the city council committee memberships in accordance with council rule 19D, committee appointments.
Thanks. And I have, I have spoken with my colleagues on this. And I would like to appoint all city council people to all of our standing committees.
Looking around the room, does everybody accept? Okay, all right. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your service to Missoula. We're much richer and better placed because of the effort that you make as city council people. Thank you. All right. That then concludes our new business items. So, we'll go ahead and just make some, I'll make some brief remarks from communications from the mayor. First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. I forgot to say that at the very beginning of the year. Maybe I did, 2024, here we are. I want to recognize a couple people in the room tonight in the audience. We have some Harvard Kennedy School of Government fellow students here. And there are three students, but two remain this evening. And so, we've got Nora Cahill and we've got Liza Keller. And they're here working with the city's Community Planning Development and Innovation Department. Missoula was lucky enough to be chosen by these fellow students. And they are helping our staff further the work that we're doing to help the city of Missoula's municipal buildings utilize dollars, federal dollars available to us through the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act. So, the city of Missoula, as many of you know, has assets and ownership under, under our ownership. And so, looking for opportunities to utilize these funding sources to, to make our buildings operate cleaner and reduce energy costs and hopefully cost to the taxpayers as well. In addition, the students have an opportunity to witness local government in action. And that's why they are here this evening. So, welcome and thank you for your service to Missoula. Hope you're enjoying yourself. The other thing I just wanted to mention is we didn't have a formal proclamation on our agenda just because of timing. But we do have a joint proclamation moving forward with the Board of County Commissioners in recognition of Martin Luther King Junior Day. I will note that we don't have a city council meeting on Monday because that is a national holiday. And this proclamation will be made available on our city website once it is read into record on Wednesday. But I just wanted to note the, the one quote from this proclamation is that life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And, you know, tonight, I think, is a good example, as we have a number of people serving as, in roles as city council in addition to having full-time jobs and full-time lives outside of this work. And that is because of the dedication that obviously you clearly feel that you are here to serve others. And I would say, speaking for myself, I feel the same way in this role. And as local municipal government, I can say from working with so many amazing skilled staff people, several of which are in the room tonight, that there is a real sense of service to our community. And there is lots of hard work and hard work to be done. But at the end of the day, people are dedicated to the betterment of Missoula. And I just want to thank each and every one of you, including the folks that are in the audience tonight. So many friendly faces that come and stick it out with us and participate from the public. We appreciate you. So, I just wanted to say thanks, everybody, and recognizing the good work that has been done and that continues to be done here in Missoula and nationally. Also, I'll conclude my comments there and go ahead and turn it over to council comments. And so, Ms. Jordan, I'll start with you tonight. That's okay?
I'll pass, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Basika?
Well, I wanted to expand on what you just said. As I try to do is explain why we have holidays off. And so, Martin Luther King Junior Day, which is officially the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr., and often referred to shorthand as MLK Day, is a federal holiday that marking the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr. It's observed on the third Monday of January each year. Born in 1929, King's actual birthday is January 15th, which in 1929 fell on a Tuesday. The holiday is similar to holidays set under the Uniform Monday Holiday Act. The earliest Monday for this holiday is January 15th, and the latest is January 21st. I'm almost done. King was the chief spokesperson for nonviolent activism and the civil rights movement, which protested racial discrimination in federal and state law. The campaign for a federal holiday in King's honor began soon after his assassination in 1968. President Ronald Reagan signed the holiday into law in 1983, and it was first observed three years later on January 20th, 1986. At first, some states resisted observing the holiday as such, giving it alternative, alternative names or combining it with other holidays. However, it was officially observed in all 50 states for the first time in 2000. So, that is why you have Monday off. And I just wanted to let everybody know that. And I also wanted to welcome the, our two new council members. And I also wanted to congratulate Amber Cheryl and Myrta Basara for president and vice president. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basika. Appreciate that. It's always good to have a bit of a history lesson and remember why we celebrate things. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, I'm just, thank you all for your warm welcome over previous few weeks and getting acclimated into what it's like to do council business and sitting here in the chair and doing this firsthand. I just look forward to the next four years doing the people's work. I feel it's, you know, a privilege to be here to represent folks of my ward, citizens of Missoula. And as you just said, there's a lot of work to be done this coming year and, you know, look forward to doing that work, budget, what have you going forward. And yeah, congratulations as well, Councilwoman Cheryl. And Councilwoman, appreciate it. And yeah, look forward to working with everybody, different committees going forward. And yeah, go on from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I will be quick. I just want to say welcome to our, our new council members. And thank you both for, for stepping up and being willing to serve. Don't know that suit jackets are necessary. We can stick to collared shirts. I feel like, feel like all of a sudden, I'm not meeting the dress code. But, you know, that's fine. I won't say how you look because we don't want to start off on any bad, bad run here. Noted. Thank you. I also just want to give a shout out to the University of Montana, who I think has done a tremendous job on the national stage in the last few weeks of illustrating who they and we are and who we are as a community. And we've seen that both on sporting events, but also at the, what awards were last night? The Golden Globes? The Golden Globes. And I just think that it's a good reminder of how great, how many great things are happening at the University of Montana. And a shout out to the alumni office who knocked it out of the park in Texas this weekend.
Great. Thank you for those comments. It's important to be recognized at that, at that level. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And that is, that is why Mike was a little late, as you mentioned, coming back from the game. So, first of all, I think that, that quote that, or the question, really, what are you doing for others is one that really resonates with me. And I think probably really resonates with everyone on this body. Because I don't think you come to this work without being driven to do things for others. I also really hope that Mike's saying that Gwen's was the hardest term as president is true and that he didn't just curse us. You never, you never know. That's one thing I've learned in this job. And I also, I don't, I wanted to expand on something I had said about Myrta is that I do think that, that when we, we have disagreed on items, and I think that's true for everyone around the horseshoe, that the result is better and it's a more thoughtful outcome. And I think that's why it is important to, to disagree on the things politely, usually. I also want to welcome our new councilmen. I'm really looking forward to, and I have met with both of you, and I'm really looking forward to doing that in the future. I do want to, you guys all thanked Stacy and Gwen before, but I want to thank you both again. Your commitment and leadership over the last couple of years has been crucial for this council. And as I said previously, it was, it really was probably the hardest two years on council. I really hope that that is an accurate statement. But you're not missing a beat and stepping up to serve as mayor, to, to dig in. I can't even, I already understand in just kind of preparation for this role in the last month, how much, how it's, it's a lot more work even when all that stuff's not going on. So, I, I'm appreciating that already more and more. And that was good for this council and it was good for our city. So, I will thank you again for that. And third, I do want to thank my colleagues for your faith in me taking over this role, having gotten through the tumult of a number of situations that I think none of us could have imagined ourselves being in over the last few years. I do think we're at a point that we can kind of take a breath and assess if there are some areas that we need to make changes or we need to make improvements. I don't really think that we had that luxury over the last couple of years because we were just dealing with the fires in front of us. In my first term on council, which just ended a few days back, we dealt with the global pandemic, the illness and the death of our longest-serving mayor, the difficult appointment of his replacement, three changes in leadership at the city, a very weird tie vote in an election, just to name a few. And these don't even start to cover the ongoing issues like housing prices, homelessness, environmental issues, taxes, city staffing, and beginning code reform. When you list them all out, it kind of makes us all wonder why we focus on what we're doing for others, right? You gotta stay in that mindset. Anyway, I'm really looking forward to working with you, Mayor Davis, and my colleagues. And, you know, I, I always, you know, say what our goal should be, and which I believe that it is around this council, is to serve this city to the best of our ability with the tools that we are provided. We're not provided enough, but that's another, another comment. But I, I hope to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. All right, Mr. Carlino?
Yeah. I just wanted to flag that we got an email asking if any, if any of us want to read books about MLK to Hellgate Elementary on Friday. So, I signed up for that. And it'd be great if, there's plenty of spots open. If anybody else wants to join, there's a ton of different time slots. And yeah, thank you to all the millions of activists, along with Martin Luther King Jr., who fought for racial justice and for a better world that we're still working towards. I do want to talk about the zoning map really quick. In 2024, the state legislature had passed a law to make it to where we would no longer have single-family only zones in all those major towns in Montana. And currently, that's in the injunction in the courts. And I know that that was part of our early deliverables is to allow for duplexes by right in all of these residential zones. And I just ask that we continue to still make that part of the early deliverables. And regardless of what, whether the state says it's mandated or not, I just want to flag that. It's really important that we do that. A few reasons why. If we don't build inwards, in and up, we're gonna build out and sprawl, destroying our environmental land, destroying wildlife habitat, et cetera. It, right now, our zoning map is restricting housing supply, making the housing prices go up. And, you know, if we can at least pass the duplexes now, like we were about to, I think that would help with the housing supply at least a little bit. Currently, our zoning map is causing gentrification in certain neighborhoods, like the North Side, West Side, or Franklin to the Fort, where the only neighborhoods that are allowing such density, while other neighborhoods are only allowing for single-family only zoning. Let's see, segregation. If you look at our land use and equity report, you can see how our current zoning map is segregating people based off of race and income. So, I just encourage everybody to please read the land use and equity report. And I guess the last point I would make about the zoning map is taxes. I think if we allow for more density, I know that we will have a larger tax base. And when we sprawl, it's hard for the city to pay for those costs. And often sprawling out and out makes our tax situation even harder. So, there's a lot of reasons to make this change now. And I just hope that we continue on to make that change in the early, early deliverables like we were already intending to. So, yeah, I hope for a good code reform process. And I hope that we can make some serious changes in the coming couple of months with this, with these early deliverables and stay on track with those things. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carlino. Ms. Jones?
So, yes, welcome to our new council members. And congratulations, Councilor Basara and Cheryl. Thank you for standing up and stepping in to, to lead. I appreciate it. I did want to just follow up on Martin Luther King Day, which is Monday. There are some events going on in Missoula. There is a March for Peace that starts at 3:15 at the Memorial Rose Garden, right off of Brooks. And then from, let me see, 4 until 6 o'clock, there is a community dinner at St. Anthony's Church at 217 Tremont Street. So, there are some Martin Luther King Day events going on, and I hope folks can join those. And then finally, yeah, I was so proud of the Grizz to get to the national championship. I wish, I wish they'd won, but you know what? They played hard. It was a great game to watch. It was super exciting. And I just do have to reveal some true colors. I've been checking the score a few times tonight. Just want to say, go blue.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Farmer?
Yeah, really quickly, just want to say welcome to Bob and Eric. And I'm excited to have you guys on here. And I'm looking forward to no longer being the newest person on council. And thank you for being willing to serve. It's, it's a big commitment. And I'm always impressed that we have folks that are wanting to step up and serve our community. And congratulations to Amber and Myrta. I look forward to serving with both of you in 2024. And I think we have some exciting projects. And I'm really excited that you're also willing to serve and lead this council.
Great. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Farmer. Ms. Basara?
Thanks. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your vote of confidence. I look forward to being your vice president. And to Gwen and Stacy, once again, thank you. You laid a good foundation for us to, to, to work on. So, it's appreciated. Welcome to Bob and Eric. You did great. And I also want to say that for MLK Day, do, if you can, do try to participate in one of the many activities. I find, I find that it's a good day to refocus our work here on council. And it's, it's just humbling. And it, at least for me, it always recenters what I believe in and what we need to be working towards. So, you know, participating in at least one of those events, I think it's always, always really good. That's it. Thanks.
Great. Thanks for your comments, Ms. Basara. Mr. Nelson?
I'm actually gonna pass.
Okay. Great. Savage?
Yes, I also wanted to say welcome to our two new council people. We're glad you're here. And congratulations to the new president and vice president. And I wanted to thank Mr. Nugent for how kind you have been in your comments about the University of Montana. I work at the University of Montana. That is my day job. I work for the College of Arts and Media. And I work on the marketing team that's been doing all of that, all of those events. I personally have not been doing any of that. But, you know, but I know they have been working tirelessly and they would go week by week, you know, and find out, oh, we made another game. And so, you know, creating events that were all the way in Texas, I mean, it took a lot of effort. So, thank you for saying that. And I also wanted to call out and say congratulations to Lily Gladstone on her Golden Globe win last night. She is a graduate of the College of Arts and Media.
Media, um, the School of Theater. Um, and everybody was thrilled. And, um, incidentally, in the Kymon, when she was at the university, she did get voted most likely to win an Oscar. So, you know, hopefully, hopefully that will happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Well, that is really, that is really cool. That's wonderful. Um, all right. Oh, thank you. Good, goodness. Stacy, so sorry. Ms. Anderson, please.
Oh, that's okay. Thanks so much. I'm sorry that I'm not there to welcome our new council members in person, but welcome to Bob and Eric. I look forward to working with you, especially Bob, as my new wardmate. Um, and I do want to just take a quick moment to, uh, thank Ms. Jones for all the hard work. I didn't chime in when we were, um, doing the nomination for Ms. Cheryl, but, um, I, their, you know, public service, I truly believe is a noble endeavor, which is why I think all of us spend our time doing that. And I really, um, have been reflecting on the comments that Ms. Mayor Davis said about what are you doing for others? And I think that Ms. Jones is, um, a pretty, um, perfect embodiment of that. Um, I had a brief window into all of the work that she was doing behind the scenes and in for the community, um, during what was an incredibly difficult time with these, um, illness, um, and the ultimate passing of Mayor Engen. And, um, it, it was, um, an incredibly heartbreaking time, and while trying to balance personal sadness and having to also kind of keep it all together and keep the train running on time was a Herculean effort. And Ms. Jones, um, stepped up and did it, um, better than anyone could have been asked to do. And, um, I just am appreciative of her public service and her daily commitment to this community and to its constituency and us on council. Um, you know, she has become a dear friend, so not only is she helping guide the city, but she offers to run and get, um, you know, medicine pickup and bring you soup when you're sick and, um, and just is a, a gem of a human, and I have so enjoyed serving with her, um, in our leadership capacity. And now, we will just, uh, we'll get to serve together on council and, and be there to support, um, uh, Amber Cheryl, and Mirta Becerra, and all the rest, and Mayor Davis in her new role, and, um, and continue our good work. Yeah, but just really wanted to say thank you personally from me for your leadership as well as your friendship. Um, and obviously with the bringing of soup part, um, I just feel like it's my, I need to make a public announcement on, um, this latest strain of COVID is no joke. Um, it took down my entire family over the holidays, and I think that three years into the pandemic, we have all sort of come, become a little complacent about the fact that this is just something that we're going to have to live with in our daily lives. And, and on some level, that is true, but, um, it is still no joke. And this has been the, I, there's only one other time in my adult life I have thought I have been sicker than I have been. And so, um, the vaccination rate for the folks who are, um, taking the, uh, booster shot is incredibly low. Um, I was flying this fall and saw very little mask wearing. Um, and I just think we all need to, um, not, if we're not doing it for ourselves, do it for our fellow community members, um, to try to just kind of think about those extra precautions. We don't necessarily need to go back into a lockdown situation, but if you're feeling sick, stay at home. Um, there's also a terrible case of RSV going around and the flu, and there are still incredibly vulnerable members of our community, um, who, you know, need us to all do the right thing so that this variant, so we don't keep getting all sorts of mutations, of variants, as well as spreading it around. Um, you know, we were successful in keeping my mom safe from this for the entire time. Um, and she's an incredibly immunocompromised person, and unfortunately ended up getting COVID. Um, and we're working through it now. So, um, encourage everyone to get your flu shot. If you're old enough to get your RSV shot, if you haven't gotten the booster, please do so. Um, there's a lot of really good science behind this, and this is becoming all too incredibly political, and it really shouldn't. This is public health. This is just doing the right thing for our community. The Missoula City County Public Health Department has walk-in, um, immunizations available Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10 to 4. You can walk in, you can get the COVID shot, you can get the flu vaccine. Um, and then if you need to make an appointment because your schedule is tight, you can do that on Wednesdays from 10 to 4:30. Um, the phone number to schedule them or call with any questions is 406-258-3363. You can also go to Costco, Walgreens, CBS. Um, you know, I've read some reports about the fact that, you know, some, um, an extreme amount of people are going to get sick in the next couple of weeks because this is all going around, and people are getting, compounding things. So, do the right thing. Wash your hands, sensible stuff we've all learned. Stay home if you're sick, and look out for your neighbors, and bring your friends soup, because it really does help. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Wishing you the best of health and, and your family the best of health as well. Absolutely, everybody, let's stay healthy out there. One quick, um, point of business that, um, the, we won't have a City Council meeting on the 15th, and so there will not be committee meetings on the 17th. Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Cheryl. But there will be committee meetings this Wednesday, and, uh, lots of business to cover since the council's been off for a couple of weeks for the holiday, and so, uh, should be a, a good, robust committee schedule. With that, there is administratively approved agreement report in your board packet if you're interested on items that do not come in front of council. And with that, I will adjourn the first meeting of City Council at 8:41 PM. Thank you. Congratulations. Awesome.